Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission. Welcome to today's review session. Today's date is September 19, 2022. I don't know if there are Giants, Jets, Mets, or Yankees fans on today's call, but if there are and if there are not, I'll be very concerned for the New York City Planning Commission. But I expect that there are. Congratulations to all of you on a great day yesterday. The first time all four teams won on the same day since 2009. So with that moment of optimism, let me also kick off today's session with some other good news that the city council has advanced the Halitz North project, which, as you all recall, the commission had approved a number of weeks ago. This Astoria project will create over 1,300 homes, of which 335 will be deeply affordable. And on top of delivering a significant number of homes to help address our city's housing crisis, the project creates publicly accessible and resilient open space along the waterfront. Let me just take a moment to thank and congratulate Councilmember Tiffany Caban for her leadership in getting this project to the finish line, of course, as well as to her council colleagues in doing so. We're going to have a brief conversation about a couple of council modifications on Halitz North and a scope determination today, so that is coming. I also want to note that today is the start of Climate Week, which is an important moment for the city to highlight all the work that we are doing to prepare for the change in climate. This work for us includes a package of zoning changes that the Department of City Planning is preparing. It's frequently referred to as the City of Yes Proposals, but City of Yes is actually three specific text amendment proposals, one of which is zoning for zero carbon. And a priority of the mayor's, this will seek to remove costly barriers to the many green investments that we need to be able to reduce our carbon emissions. So we're going to have more to say about that one in the coming months, and we expect to refer it over to the city council in the spring. On today's agenda, we have several projects to consider. We will continue a discussion on the state's plan for five World Trade Center. This state-led project is known as a general project plan, or GPP. You will recall, for those of you who were on the commission at the time, that we reviewed this once for the change of use from commercial to mixed use, including residential. Today, it's back for consideration of its zoning override, site plan, bulk changes, and design. I will note that we continue to support including as much affordability that the state can make work for this project, which would create 1,200 homes, at least a quarter of them permanently affordable, retail and community space in downtown Manhattan. The CPC will also hear about another housing proposal in East Tremont in the Bronx to create over 200 homes, 30% of them for formerly homeless families and individuals. Also in the Bronx, a slightly different sort of proposal than we normally see, a proposal by New York City to replace an old retaining wall and rebuild the roadway along part of Pratt Avenue in Baychester. We're going to get some updates today on projects that have already had hearings, including Innovative Urban Village in East New York. And a big preview here, on Wednesday, we're going to be voting on Innovation Queens in Astoria. This proposal aims to create 2,800 new homes, about 700 permanently affordable, along with new office space, open space, and many community amenities such as a new library. So we're going to hear our Queens teams' recommendations for that project a little bit later on today. So on that note, let's begin. Ryan Singer, I'm going to turn to you. Why don't you take us to our very first item on today's city planning agenda?
Certainly. I will note that it is 1:05 PM and a quorum is present. And the first item on our agenda is a review of a general project plan in Manhattan Community District One, and our presenter is Jasmine Paul.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissions. The Lower Manhattan Development Corporation, known as LMDC, and Empire State Development, known as ESD, is proposing a second phase of modifications to the World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program General Project Plan. Throughout this presentation, I'll be referring to this project as the World Trade Center GPP. The modifications to the World Trade Center GPP involve one particular site, known as Site Five, or World Trade Center Tower Five, which is outlined in the rendering of the World Trade Center campus here, which shows the campus once all construction is completed. Earlier in the year, the commission voted on Phase One of the modifications to the GPP, which involve proposed use modifications at Site Five. Today, I'll be presenting Phase Two of those modifications to the GPP, which involve proposed zoning overrides and more detailed building and public space design. I know some of the commissioners today were not part of that vote earlier in the year and might be hearing about the World Trade Center GPP for the first time. So later on in the presentation, I'll be going over what a GPP is and also providing a refresher on the history of the GPP. Next slide. So Site Five is located within the World Trade Center campus at 130 Liberty Street in Lower Manhattan Community District One. Phase Two of the modifications to the GPP will focus on the various zoning overrides and the site and building design. So these modifications will facilitate the creation of an approximately 940-foot-tall mixed-use building. I also want to mention that we're going to have a follow-up conversation scheduled for October 11th's review session so that you have time to review the information and address any questions or comments. So today, the commission does not need to vote, but can use the time to discuss and ask questions to prepare for a vote in the next session. The vote will be memorialized in a letter sent to ESD, and a draft of that letter will be sent to the commissioners before the next October meeting. Next slide. So to the left is a map of the World Trade Center campus. And here you can see Site Five in relation to the rest of the World Trade Center towers, with one World Trade Center in the dark green, starting on the northwest, and the rest of the towers falling clockwise around the 9/11 memorial. Site Five is at the southern end of the campus. So a few things to note about the surrounding neighborhood. Site Five is located within the special Lower Manhattan district in a C-69 zoning district. Site Five is surrounded by several neighborhoods, including Greenwich South, Battery Park City, and the Financial District. And lastly, the World Trade Center campus map highlights the area's wide access to public transit. And in general, there are about 14 subway lines within a one-quarter mile of each other. Next slide. So before we go into the details of the Phase Two modifications, I want to give some background information to set up context of this project, including what a GPP is, the role the City Planning Commission plays, and discuss the Phase One modifications. A GPP is a New York State general project plan, which you'll commonly hear us refer to as the GPP. The New York State Urban Development Corporation Act requires that any GPP that overrides local regulations be referred to the local city planning commission. The commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or modifications to the GPP. The commission has reviewed several GPPs throughout the years, including World Trade Center GPP Phase One earlier this year in February. Phase One of the modifications to the World Trade Center GPP focused on changing Site Five from a strictly commercial use to allow for the development option of a mixed-use tower with a residential and community facility uses. The commissioners voted to recommend approval for the use change, and ESD and LMDC have since been working on Phase Two of those modifications. Next slide. So first, I'll go over the site and building design, which will focus on public and vehicle access. Next slide. So here's a map showing the immediate surrounding area around Site Five. Site Five borders three streets with Greenwich Street to the east, Albany Street to the south, and Washington Street to the west. Directly north of Site Five is Liberty Park, which is also home of St. Nicholas Church. Liberty Park is an elevated public green space, which ESD is proposing to connect to World Trade Center Site Five through a bridge on the second floor, which I'll talk about in the next few slides. Next slide. So here's a site plan of the ground floor of Site Five, where I'll talk through the ground floor uses. The orientation remains the same from the previous slide, where Liberty Park is still directly to the north of Site Five. So in between Liberty Park and the north side of Site Five, ESD is proposing to create a 24-hour covered driveway that will connect Greenwich Street and Washington Street. Cars will be able to enter from a curb cut on Washington Street through the driveway and then exit via a curb cut on Greenwich Street. The driveway will have sidewalks on either side for the public to walk through. This wide driveway will reduce the required pedestrian circulation space, which I'll discuss later in the presentation during the zoning overrides. The north side of the building adjacent to the driveway is also the main residential lobby, which you can see in the yellow space. And now going clockwise, along Greenwich Street, there will be two retail spaces on both corners of the building with a public and office lobby located between the retail spaces. The space in front of the building frontage and the sidewalk is one section of the pedestrian circulation space. To the south along Albany Street, there'll be two additional retail spaces to the southern-west end of the building and a secondary residential lobby and access point. This is also the second section of the pedestrian circulation space. And now to the west, Washington Street, these spaces are mainly for loading, servicing, and other refuse uses. Next slide. So here's a site plan of the second floor of Site Five. Again, the orientation is the same from the previous slides, where Liberty Park is directly to the north. And as I mentioned earlier, Liberty Park is elevated, and the Site Five will connect with the park through a bridge, which is colored in yellow here. From that bridge, the public can access a public passage that will connect to the community facility space on the third floor through stairs or an elevator. The rest of the space on the second floor is dedicated to the residential uses, which are separate from the public space. Next slide. This slide summarizes access to the public spaces on Site Five. This is the same orientation with Liberty Park to the north. So starting from the left of the diagram showing the ground floor, the public can enter Site Five through the public and office lobby along Greenwich Street, where there are elevators that go to the second floor and also go directly to the community facility on the third floor. There are also stairs to the second-floor passage from the ground floor. In the middle diagram, you have the second floor, where the public can enter Site Five from Liberty Park through a bridge and can walk through the public passage, which connects to the third floor via stairway or elevator. Lastly, the third floor has the community facility space. Next slide. Here is a rendering of Site Five, which shows the ground floor and second floor of the building. In this rendering, we're on Greenwich Street, looking towards the driveway, where Liberty Park is reorientated to the right side of Site Five. Next slide. This marked-up version of the rendering shows the different elements I talked through earlier. So starting from the right by Liberty Park, you can see the bridge that will connect to the second floor of the building, that's labeled "public corridor" here, and the Liberty Park stairs that connect to the corner of the site. The main residential lobby highlighted in the middle is also accessed from the driveway. And then on the left is the public and office entrance. Next slide. Here is a rendering showing the view of the entrance to the driveway on Washington Street, where Liberty Park is now to the left. You can see the bridge more clearly, as well as the second-floor passage. The side includes the servicing, refuse, and MAP uses, which you can see to the right. These past few slides have mainly focused on the ground floor, the second floor, and the third floor, which include all the public spaces. So next, I'll briefly on the rest of the building uses and more detail specific to the residential portion. Next slide. So here to the right is a rendering of the proposed building design for Site Five. To the left, you'll see the mixed uses throughout the building. So following the community facility space and mechanical uses on the third floor, there are six floors of office space, followed by 62 floors of residential, with some additional floors for mechanical uses. Next slide. The mixed-use building will have commercial and retail uses, a minimum of 10,000 square feet of commercial facility use, and up to 1.1 million square feet of residential. As part of the development of 1,200 rental units, there would be a minimum of 25% of units as permanently affordable housing to households earning at or below 50% AMI. Of those 25% of units, which is approximately 300 units, at least 10% of the units need to be rented to households earning at or below 40% AMI. Next slide. So next, I'll talk about the proposed zoning overrides. Next slide. This slide generally summarizes the overrides into certain buckets. Early in the year for Phase One, ESD focused on the use change in the first box. In Phase Two, they're focusing on the rest of these zoning items, including regulations governing height and setback, street walls, maximum horizontal dimensions for tall buildings, and ground floor and curb cut regulations. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, Site Five is located within the special Lower Manhattan district and is mapped on a C-69 district. So many of their overrides include waiving special Lower Manhattan districts and C-69 regulations in order to construct Site Five. Next slide. So here's a chart briefly going over the specific zoning overrides they're requesting. So starting from the top, the department supports these four overrides because it fits within the built context of World Trade Center campus and because of the inclusion of affordable housing in the development. They include overrides such as proposing a 12-residential FAR without a noticeable element. This district allows for a max residential FAR of 10. They're also proposing a max base height of 190 feet, but in this district, the max base height of a building is capped at a certain height. So for example, on Greenwich Street, which allows them the highest max base height, they are permitted to go up to 97.5 feet. Additionally, we have no issues with some of the overrides that affect the ground floor level, starting from number seven to number 10. These overrides include a proposed retail glazing that begins at two feet instead of what we require, which is from ground floor to the height of the ceiling, or 14 feet above grade. Also, they're proposing a lobby width of 75 linear feet. They are permitted a max lobby width of 33.75 linear feet. In the next slide, I'm going to discuss our comments on the design and override that we have concerns with, which include the greatly reduced pedestrian circulation space, where they're required to provide approximately 4,638 square feet of pedestrian circulation space, but they're only providing 1,055 square feet. And in addition, they are proposing a curb cut on Greenwich Street, which is not allowed on that street normally. Next slide. Overall, the department finds some of the proposed waivers acceptable. However, we would like to highlight a few concerns that we do have with the proposed design and public elements of the GPP. Regarding the driveway, we question the need for creating a private drive-through block, driveway with vehicle drop-off into a private residential lobby with two curb cuts for a vehicle access. This is a transit-rich area, and spaces like these tend to turn into parking spaces for a few lucky individuals. It is also located next to the entrance to Liberty Park and in an area with a lot of pedestrian activity. The driveway provides for one 11-foot lane at its narrowest and becomes 19-foot lane at its widest. The space dedicated to the driveway is at the expense of the required pedestrian circulation space, which I'll note that the applicant is seeking to waive out of that provision of 3,583 square feet of pedestrian circulation space. The department strongly believes that the private vehicle access, such as this, conflicts with the public pedestrian experience and public access. Next slide. We also have concerns over the second-floor public passage of the viable public space. Proposed passage is envisioned as a space that will connect Liberty Park, the community space within Site Five building, and a public lobby within the Site Five building, fronting on Greenwich Street. However, we strongly recommend that the design of the space is enhanced and modified to create a welcoming experience with added furniture like benches, movable tables and chairs, as well as programming and wayfinding to encourage the public use. Over decades of our work in public space, the department has found that elevated public spaces are difficult spaces to design and maintain. And also, discussed in a moment, with the elimination of the driveway, the second-floor passage could be extended to meet the park and expand design options for the space. Next slide. Regarding the zoning overrides, we have concerns that the required pedestrian circulation space is being significantly reduced from what is required in this district. You can see the PCS colored in the dark blue in the drawing to the right. The width of the proposed pedestrian circulation space is three feet and is also partially covered. The zoning resolution requires that the zoning lots of at least 5,000 square feet that contain more than 70,000 square feet of new floor area are required to provide a PCS. Their zoning lot is approximately 92,700 square feet, which calculates to a minimum of 4,638 square feet of pedestrian circulation space. ESD is waiving out of approximately 3,583 square feet of PCS required. ESD is also requesting a curb cut on Greenwich Street. As part of the special Lower Manhattan district, curb cuts are prohibited along this section of Greenwich Street. You can see the curb cut in the lighter shade of blue on the image to the right as well. So lastly, Lower Manhattan is celebrated as a walkable neighborhood with public spaces that strengthen the pedestrian experience. Although there are many structural factors that the current design takes into consideration, the department believes that the driveway... Oh, I apologize. The department believes that the driveway is unnecessary and should be eliminated to create a more safe, accessible, and quality public space for all users. The elimination of the driveway allows for more opportunities to enhance the public realm by creating the required pedestrian circulation space and allowing for other public space elements. Additionally, by eliminating the driveway, the design of the second-floor passage could also be improved. That's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Jasmine. And I'm sure there'll be questions from other commissioners. I already see one. Let me just make a comment and then really ask a question, or maybe a couple of comments. First, the driveway feels like a really significant missed opportunity for the ability to enhance pedestrian space on this site. And it also sounds like it is directly in conflict with pedestrian circulation space that is ordinarily required here. Also, the private vehicle use, you know, it certainly looks like it would create an obstacle or an interference with pedestrian experience and use of the site. And that second-floor passage also, I agree, that it feels like it would be very good, perhaps for the building, but less so for the public. So I think that you've got it right on those points, and certainly would be eager to see that reflected in our letter, which, for the benefit of the commission, we will draft and will have for your consideration for our October 11 meeting. I did want to ask one question to you, Jasmine, and to the Manhattan team about the affordability point here. And I recognize this is not the question which is before us today. We dealt with the issue of use from commercial to mixed use, allowing for residential here some time ago. Today, we're dealing with the overrides, design bulk, et cetera. And, but I do think, you know, I do want to ask the question as to whether the Department of City Planning supports the proposed affordability here, whether it's enough, whether there's opportunities to do more. And I just wanted to see if you, or I see Eric has popped up here, maybe one of you would be willing to take that question. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that, Chair Grotnick. So the, as Jasmine detailed in her presentation, you know, the site or the proposal, you know, is for the site to have 25% of the units designated as permanently affordable units. That translates to approximately 300 units on the site. The RFP for, the state's RFP for Site Five specified that the development should be consistent with mandatory inclusionary housing. And, you know, as Jasmine detailed, the affordability proposal here would be consistent with MIH. And, you know, MIH is a program that we believe in very strongly. And the fact that this project would be consistent with MIH, you know, leads us to strongly support the affordability as proposed.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Let me go over to the vice chairman, Mr. Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Jasmine, for the presentation. I was just wondering, with regard to the FAR, do we know the delta between, in terms of the residential unit number, between an FAR of 10 and an FAR of 12? Is it 20% fewer units, or how does that work, if you know?
I don't know the number, but if anything, they're increasing their residential units because they're going from...
Well, they are, obviously.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, what would they be at an FAR of 10?
I can get you that number for the October 11th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's get Commissioner Gold.
Thank you. Jasmine, I just wanted to follow up a tiny bit on the driveway issues, since that seems to be the biggest, let's say, obstacle at this moment. And I agree, it definitely does complicate the situation on the public space. Out of curiosity, a little difficult to tell, is that, what's it really being used for? Is that delivery, is that through traffic, is it drop-offs? What's essentially, what's the purpose of that driveway? Maybe you could elaborate a little bit.
Right. Its main purpose is for drop-offs. It'll allow like a space for the residents to, you know, drop off what they need to drop off, because there's no in-building parking. They believe that there was enough parking garages in the area in order for them to go park their vehicles there.
Got it. So it seems like it's probably a nice luxury, but not necessarily a must-have, if you will.
Perfect. And Commissioner, just to elaborate really briefly on that, you know, we see not infrequently requests for, you know, private, you know, exclusive drop-off zones within buildings, adjacent to buildings. And, you know, as a matter of course, you know, the Manhattan office, you know, we do generally try to steer projects away from that kind of exclusive drop-off access. You know, the sidewalk in Manhattan certainly is a really important mixing chamber for the city, and we believe very strongly that, you know, people should, you know, get out of your taxi, get out of your Uber, you know, at the sidewalk and enter the building just like anybody else does. And, you know, that's the lens through which we are viewing this proposal and why we have specific concerns about this particular driveway.
Got it, got it. But that's helpful. And I guess part two is presumably, the thinking is, if that went by the wayside, then, you know, the public access, or the public space, if you will, could really easily be expanded. You don't have the complication of having to worry about that. So it comes down a level, and maybe it solves two issues. Got it. Perfect, thank you. It was a good, nice presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Jasmine. There has been at least one independent proposal that I'm aware of, and then maybe others, that have indicated that the site could be developed as 100% affordable. And I wondered whether the state had examined that proposal and whether you had asked them about it and what their response was.
So the state, ESD, they have, they had a public meeting a few days ago this past, last week on Thursday. As far as the proposal goes, I know that they're still working with the community, incorporating all the comments into their public common period. So they yet to formally respond based on that proposal yet, so we're still waiting to hear on that.
Okay. And will we hear back from them on these various issues before the department drafts the letter to the state?
I don't believe so. Their public comment period is 30 days, which finishes October 17. We're having a follow-up conversation on October 11. So we might send out the letter before their comment period is completed.
And will the commission see that letter before it goes out?
Yes, I'm gonna, we're gonna send a draft of that before the October 11th meeting for those revisions.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Bozzer?
Hi, thank you, and thanks for this analysis. I just had a question, a couple of questions. I think you mentioned this, Jasmine, but if, is it, are they proposing that it definitely be a private driveway? And I was curious how they would even manage regulating that. But I wasn't clear on what the alternative to the, of the space would be if it weren't the private driveway. And then on the residential FAR, I think I share the same question as Vice Chair Knuckles, but I just want to be sure that with... But I just want to be sure that with the proposed increase of F A R, that twenty-five percent affordable also increases. So it's, it's twenty-five percent of the increased baseline of residential, if that could just be confirmed for us. Just so that it can be very clear what the public benefit is. If any, with that increased F A R, that would be.
I'll note that down and I'll have an answer for the both of you for the next meeting regarding that increase. And then also regarding the driveway, it is going to be a, a private driveway. I don't have details on how they're going to enforce that. I could ask them and see what kind of response they can have available for next time. But I think in regards to like alternatives, you know, we just believe that like in terms of like values, we just want like that public space to be, you know, as safe and as accessible for all users. And right now with, you know, vehicles being able to access that, that space, it's not really highlighting those values.
And Commissioner, just in terms of what could be done with the space if it was not a driveway. As Jasmine mentioned, you know, they are seeking to override the required amount of public space on the site to reduce the, reduce the amount of public space on the site. So, you know, we think that there are opportunities if the driveway were eliminated for the building to, you know, it could possibly shift position and create open space elsewhere on the site. At a minimum, you know, what it could do is bring the second floor public space that Jasmine talked about, that public passageway in closer proximity to Liberty Park and create a, you know, a more engaging interface between the park and the public space. You know, elevated public spaces are frequently very challenging to get right to make sure that the public, you know, knows that they're there, number one. Feels comfortable being in them, has a reason to be in it. So we think that there are a lot of things that can be gained, you know, by, you know, both removing the driveway and also, you know, addressing those challenges with the elevated public space. You know, it, it could be any number of things. I don't want to presuppose what the solution might be. You know, our comments are really about the, that the driveway is there in the plan and we feel that it should not be.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other raised hands. I think we will, we will move on. This will be back, as Jasmine said, for further discussion and we'll have a draft as a letter for, on October eleventh. And so the second item on our agenda is a certification of special permits in Manhattan Community District Five, and our presenter is Connor Clark. Connor?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So this is a private application by two fifteen West Twenty-Eighth Street Property Owner LLC and two twenty-five West Twenty-Eighth Street Property Owner LLC, which seek two special permits pursuant to section thirteen four five one of the zoning resolution to build two separate residential accessory automated parking garages with a total capacity of seventy-seven spaces as part of two adjacent mixed use developments in Community District Five on West Twenty-Eighth Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenues. Section thirteen four five one is one of five special permits allowed under the Manhattan Core Parking Regulations. Under the Manhattan Core Regulations, accessory residential parking is capped at twenty percent of residential units in community districts one through six and thirty-five percent in community districts seven and eight. Next slide. The two buildings have been labeled by the applicant as A, the easternmost building, and B, the westernmost. Both developments were completed last year. Development A, located at two thirteen to two nineteen West Twenty-Eighth Street, contains eighty-seven residential units and just over seven thousand square feet of retail space along with the proposed forty-one automated parking spaces. As of right, it has permitted nineteen accessory parking spaces. Development B, located at two twenty-one to two twenty-seven West Twenty-Eighth Street, contains one hundred twelve rental units and just over six thousand square feet of retail space along with the proposed thirty-six automated parking spaces. As of right, it has permitted twenty-four accessory parking spaces. Development B will also contain thirty-five affordable dwelling units. Previously, the development site had three curb cuts and each building now has one curb cut for their as-of-right parking spaces. So that's two overall. Next slide. The zoning lot is outlined here in neon green on this map. The development site is located in Chelsea. The Penn South Middle Income Housing Complex is located just across Eighth Avenue to the west. And the Fashion Institute of Technology in blue is directly south. High-density commercial uses such as One and Two Penn Plaza and Madison Square Garden are located three blocks to the north. The one train runs along Seventh Avenue and stops at Twenty-Eighth Street on the same block as the zoning lot. The A C and E trains run along Eighth Avenue and stop the Penn Station along with the Long Island Railroad, New Jersey Transit and Amtrak. The M twenty bus runs north on Eighth Avenue. The M twenty and M seven run south on Seventh Avenue and the M seven runs north along with the M fifty-five on Sixth Avenue. The project site is in an M one sixty zoning district, the first established in the city in twenty eleven, which is intended to preserve the neighborhood's commercial and manufacturing character while allowing residential development and encouraging the creation of affordable housing. The maximum F A R for manufacturing and light industrial in this district is ten. For residential uses, it is nine, which may be increased to twelve by the Inclusionary Housing Program. The general built form within six hundred feet of the zoning lot consists of a mix of low and high-rise structures that contain between two and twenty-one stories, many of which were originally constructed as industrial buildings. Currently, many of the buildings support ground floor, local retail, wholesale, and other commercial service uses. There are also a few multi-unit residential buildings. The prevailing zoning districts within a six hundred foot radius of the zoning lot are C six two, C six two A, M one six and M one five. The special Hudson Yards District is located approximately six hundred fifty feet north of the zoning lot and includes a C six four zoning district. Next slide. These photos show both buildings having been recently constructed. The photo on the left shows Building B, the westernmost building, and the photo on the right shows Building A, the easternmost building. Next slide. This elevation shows the lower portion of the facade of both buildings. The garage entrances are outlined in red on the western and eastern edges of the buildings. In between, the residential and retail entrances to the buildings are shown. Next slide. Now I will walk through the plans for each of the garages. The slide shows the plan for the ground floor levels of both garages. Building A is on the right or east and Building B is on the left or west. The entrance to Building A's garage will be located approximately one hundred ninety-five feet west of Seventh Avenue and six hundred seventeen feet from Eighth Avenue. The entrance to Building B's garage will be located approximately three hundred sixty-nine feet west of Seventh Avenue and four hundred forty-two feet east of Eighth Avenue. Drivers will proceed east on one-way West Twenty-Eighth Street, a narrow sixty-foot wide street, and turn left into either garage via a twenty-foot wide curb cut. Next slide. The slide shows close-ups of both garage entrances. At the bottom of each drawing is the curb cut leading from West Twenty-Eighth Street. This feeds into the forecourt of each garage, which is located, which is shown in the bottom half of the drawing. The entry exit room, which contains the vehicle lift, is depicted in the top half of each drawing. The arriving driver will activate the exterior garage door via a remote control device. This will trigger flashing L E D warning lights located on the exterior wall of the garage, alerting pedestrians to the imminent entry or exit of a vehicle and the automated opening of the exterior garage door. Once the vehicle has entered the garage and cleared the garage door, as indicated by sensors within the garage's forecourt, the exterior garage door will will automatically close unless there is a vehicle waiting to exit. Once incoming vehicles enter the garage, an L E D sign with green and red lights located adjacent to the entry exit room automated door will indicate whether entry is available or whether the system is currently processing another vehicle. If the L E D sign is green, the automated door will open, enabling the vehicle to enter the entry exit room. If the system is processing another vehicle, the traffic light will be red and the automated entry exit room door will not open. The parking system software will be programmed to prioritize the processing of incoming vehicles over the retrieval of outgoing vehicles. After the vehicle has entered the entry exit room, the motorist will follow instructions on a screen located on the back wall within the entry exit room to properly position the vehicle on the pallet. Once sensors in the entry exit room confirm the vehicle's position, the vehicle will be scanned to ensure it complies with the parking system's dimensional requirements and a good position signal will be shown on the screen. The motorists will then turn off the vehicle and, and exit the entry exit room. They will then use the storage kiosk located in the forecourt to request that the vehicle be parked. After the motorist has completed these steps, the sensors in the entry exit room will perform a second check to verify there is no movement in the, in the room or car and it is, and it is safe for the automated parking process to begin. If it is, the entry exit room's automated door will close. If movement is detected, a warning will appear on the kiosk screen and no operations will occur. Motorists seeking to retrieve vehicles will enter the forecourt via the, the building lobby. Once inside the forecourt, they will order their car by using the kiosk. The parking system's vehicle lift will transport the vehicle up from the below-grade vehicle storage area. Once the vehicle is delivered to the ground floor, the entry exit room door and the garage door will open with the vehicle facing outward toward the forecourt. This will allow the motorist and passengers to exit, to access the vehicle. The vehicle will then proceed from the entry exit room into the forecourt toward the exit. When the automated parking system opens the garage door, two L E D warning lights located on both sides of the exterior garage door will flash and alert pedestrians to an exiting vehicle. Once the exit, once a vehicle exits the garage, the automated parking, the automated garage door will close and the garage will be ready for the next transaction. The exiting vehicle will then turn left from the building onto West Twenty-Eighth Street and travel eastbound. Next slide. Can go to the next slide. For storage of incoming vehicles, once the automated door is safely closed, the vehicle lift will transport the vehicle down several levels. These drawings show the cellar level where the vehicle will be rotated in a position. Next slide. The vehicle will then pass through the subcellar one level. Next slide. When it reaches the subcellar two level, the system will park the vehicle using the pallets and conveyors on this level or on the subcellar three level just below it. In Building A, the subcellar two level will contain eighteen conveyors and the subcellar three level will contain thirty-two conveyors. Nine of these would be empty and without a pallet on any given, at any given time in order to allow the automated system to move cars efficiently. In Building B, the subcellar two level contained twenty-six conveyors and the subcellar three level will contain twenty-one conveyors. Eleven of these would be empty at any given time. Acceptance of an incoming vehicle would take approximately three minutes. Next slide. Additional parking will be located on the subcellar three level. Next slide. The section shows a view from the side of the drawings we just went through. It shows the vehicles in the entrance rooms, the rotation as they descend and the automated parking structure on subcellar two and three levels. Next slide. The findings for section thirteen four five one indicate that the C P C may approve a parking facility that exceeds the twenty percent maximum limit for Community District Five if the number of off-street parking spaces in such proposed facility is reasonable and not excessive in relation to recent trends in close proximity to the proposed facility with regard to dwelling units and parking spaces. The special permit also has findings in section thirteen four five related to congestion, the efficient functioning of streets, conflicts between different modes of transportation and the character of the streetscape. Next slide. But for the finding related to residential growth, in order to show that the increase in parking is reasonable and not excessive, the applicant completed a residential growth parking study for both developments. The study compared all changes in residential off-street parking depicted in the map on the left to all changes in residential dwelling units depicted in the map on the right within a ten-year lookback period from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two. Sites were considered if they were located within a radius of a third of a mile of the development site outlined here in the dotted line. Next slide. Study found that during the ten-year lookback period, there was a net decrease of fifty-five parking spaces, including the project, and an increase of one thousand eight hundred forty-three dwelling units. This gives the proposed project a residential growth parking ratio of negative three percent. In Community District Five, the maximum permitted growth of off-street parking spaces to dwelling units in ten-year lookback period is twenty percent. Next slide. The applicants seek a special permit pursuant to section thirteen four five one to allow for a total of seventy-seven parking spaces in two garages on a zoning lot containing two residential buildings with a total of one hundred ninety-nine residential units. This would be an increase of thirty-four spaces over the forty-three as-of-right spaces allowed in this area of Manhattan Core. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thanks, Connor. I see that Commissioner Marin has his hand up.
Yes, I sure do. So while I understand the thinking here and the philosophy behind the additional parking spaces in a growth area, I begin to question that, knowing that the city is grappling with congestion pricing below a certain portion of Manhattan, and this is definitely an area that's going to be affected, and the need for parking in a transit-rich area or additional parking in a transit-rich area. So I, I posit those questions for consideration.
I think that we just noted, yes, we hear you on that one. I think the department has opinions somewhat aligned in with yours as well. Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you. Connor, I'm just trying to understand, are the buildings themselves as a bright? Is that why it's only an application for the parking or do the buildings already exist?
Yeah, they've, they were constructed, finished last year, I believe. And they have as-of-right parking to, that they'll, if they don't get the special permit, they would, they would just take the as-for right parking.
I see. So what would they do with the space that is not occupied by the additional parking? They'd find some other use for it, I suppose, would they?
Storage, something for residents.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, I mean, just echoing what Commissioner Marin said, I mean, what does the department believe would be a logical rationale for this? Given our policy is to deter additional parking and additional car usage in a transit-rich area. I, I find the language in the special permit not particularly helpful, given our current policy in that direction. And I haven't heard an argument articulated that would make me think this is a good idea.
Well, according to the findings as enumerated in, in section thirteen four five one, we've defined the phrase reasonable and not excessive to mean that they meet a certain percentage laid out in the residential growth parking study requirement. So that would be, you know, twenty percent growth rate of, of parking spaces to residential units over the ten-year lookback period. So that's the current methodology, the current.
But you could conversely, you could conversely argue that anything above the, as a right, is unreasonable and, you know, not, not desirable, right?
Yeah, it depends on how that term is, is defined.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Bozzer?
Has the applicant said anything about how, like, is, are these, is this parking going to be separately condoed and then sold? Or are they for the residential rental units? Have they mentioned anything about that? I looked in the briefing package and didn't see anything specific to that. And then also, if you could just clarify, and this might be because I'm newer or I just haven't fully understood this. What would the process for this special application be? I saw in the briefing package that there were placeholders for like the community board recommendation and other. But I, if you could just clarify the process that an application like this goes through. And then I do share some of the same concerns that.
Jump in on you. This is a, this is a U-Lerp, so it'll go to the community board. Back in for a hearing and, and, and because it is a special permit, it is not an automatic call-up by the city council. But I, I, we would anticipate the city council would also call this up.
But it hasn't. Okay, so it's, I, I understand now. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and there were other parts of that question that I would, you go ahead, Connor.
Just to, to ask you, what, what do you mean by separately condo? Do you mean like the spaces sold to residents as they move in, along with their units? Do you mean like the spaces sold to residents as they move in along with their unit?
Or, I mean, I think when, if they're separately condo, they could be potentially sold to anyone. So I'm just curious if they've mentioned whether it's specifically for people renting the building or if they're just getting the permissions and haven't made clear how, what they.
Yeah, they haven't. I can. It's just some ambient noise. They haven't stated that, but I can, I can reach out to them and get back to you on that.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Ryan, and thanks so much, Connor, for the presentation. Building on Commissioner Marine and Commissioner Bernie's comments, I wanted to just highlight again the, one of the questions that Commissioner Bernie asked, because I wasn't quite sure I understood the response. I think, Ryan, you, you mentioned that there seems to be some sort of like alignment in terms of the concerns of why are we considering this in, in, in the context of, you know, transit options in this, in this particular place? And so I was wondering if you can just clarify, what is the department's position on, on this?
I, I see Stephen Johnson, I'll let him answer. He's the expert on this.
Hi, my name is Stephen Johnson. So when we originally made changes to the Manhattan Core parking text, we did a study that outlined and looked at how the parking was being used in the Manhattan Core area. And what we found is that there was still a need for parking for some uses and for some people. There were still people, you know, for example, driving in with equipment or with tools or needing to find parking. So it wasn't as if parking had dried up and there was no use for it. So what we did was, as part of that text amendment, is we looked at what would indicate a need for parking in an area. So that's why we developed the residential growth parking study, which looked at recent trends in residential developments and recent trends in parking. So for example, if, this is hypothetical, if there was a building right next to this building that somehow had a new, you know, two-hundred-space parking space garage, that would then show that there could possibly be enough parking available in the area that reaches that twenty percent number for as-of-right parking. And that number would be picked up on the residential growth parking study. So I think what we had determined through that study back in twenty thirteen was that while most buildings in Manhattan do not build parking, most buildings don't include parking in their developments, there was still a need for some parking in certain circumstances. So the information that you have now in your briefing package outlines the parameters of what we thought could show recent trends and whether or not parking is necessary or was necessary or meeting growth of residential development. Because I still, you know, the numbers still show, I think, around twenty-four percent of people in Manhattan own cars. So that suggests that they would need a place to park their vehicles.
If I could also add, just, just building on that, that there is this sort of ethos in the Manhattan Core regulations of seeing parking as a shared resource. So the idea is that, you know, instead of having parking always associated with a particular residential development, that if there is parking available in the neighborhood, people will use it. And that's kind of further rationale for the, for the parking study methodology.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Connor. Believe it or not, any further questions? This is certified. And.
Excuse me, Ryan, can I, can I just, can I just say something, Ryan? I'm sorry, and I didn't raise my hand. I, you know, I just want to state that I understand that that, that may be the methodology, that methodology that was developed way back when. We're at a different point in time and we're trying to get cars off the street. So that methodology should be revisited. I really believe, I strongly believe that we should not have any additional parking consideration. This is a transit-rich area, again, I repeat, and we're grappling with congestion pricing and folks coming into Manhattan. If, if in fact we're using old guides to make these decisions, those guides need to be, they need to be reviewed.
Sure. So I understand what you're saying. We, we did the text amendment in twenty thirteen and the idea is that it looks at recent trends. But I totally agree with you with congestion pricing coming in and these different new parameters. You make some very valid points.
I see Commissioner Ron Bershad, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ryan. I meant to say something before. You know, looking at the automated system, I seen, you know, they've done presentations in my office as well for all the projects, not this particular company, but what I'm trying to understand is, a lot of jobs when they have situations like this, there's always room for queuing to put two or three cars. Obviously, this is not the situation we have here. Is there any concerns from the department with regards to, number one, you only have a twelve-foot wide sidewalk? You, one car can pull in, right? Because it takes about three minutes. Is that what you're saying for the system, but when, by the time they call it? So what happens when you have two or three cars? It's a sixty-foot, I'm sorry, it's a, it says a narrow street, but I think it's thirty-six feet from curb to curb, right? And I guess is there another development happening directly across the street, looking at the photographs in our package? Is there any concerns about the lack of queuing for vehicles coming into this building? Both these buildings?
It, it's, it's a valid concern. They do have the required reservoir spaces, so that's one factor. The turnaround time is three minutes, as you mentioned. There is, FIT is building a new campus building on the, on the south side of the block, of the street. So that's a factor. It is a one-way, a one-lane, one-way street. So, you know, there is the potential for that to happen. I, I would say on the flip side, like I said, it's an automated facility with a three-minute turnaround, which, which does create some efficiencies. And they have, they have the two reservoir spaces. So there, there are sort of pros and cons from that standpoint. And also, as I mentioned, section thirteen four five has a series of findings that you're aware of. Relates to congestion, efficient functioning of the streets, et cetera.
Also, just to add one point to that, from what Connor was saying, was that this is envisioned as a residential accessory parking facility, not a public parking garage. So typically, a public parking garage has so many ins and outs throughout the day while Manhattan residents tend to park, I mean, sorry, to access their cars on the weekends or later in the evenings and maybe not as often as a public parking garage. All right. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? I can jump in here, Ryan. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you all. All right. So this item is certified and we're going to move on to the next. Ryan, thanks. What's up for the Bronx?
The third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in the Bronx Community District Six, and our presenter is Alexandra Paredes.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is five twenty-one East Tremont Avenue rezoning, next. Seeking to facilitate a new fourteen-story development to produce approximately two hundred and five units of housing, local retail, and community facility space in the East Tremont neighborhood, community district six in the Bronx. The applicant, M five two one Associates LLC, seeks a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment to map a new M I H area. Next. I would like to walk you through briefly a little bit of the history of this neighborhood. East Tremont neighborhood was considered an important downtown for our borough almost a century ago. Was centered around the park, that hole, the old borough hole here seen in the picture, which became the first landmark of the borough and the twenty-third of the city. Part of its vitality was also given by, and if I can ask for the next slide, that the Third Avenue elevated I R L, I R, I R T train run and serve this neighborhood along Third Avenue, kind of like also enhancing its both industrial, commercial, and residential uses. It was mid-century, next, that then the Cross Bronx started dissecting our, our borough in two. And part of the main effects that it brought was also that the Third Avenue line was dismantled. Not only that, next, the area suffered a lot of disinvestment and population decline and which enhanced also what the cross, the all the negative impacts of the Cross Bronx in the neighborhoods of the borough. Next. East Tremont took time to recover, but now it has become an area where it's, East Tremont Avenue has become an important commercial corridor, where also a lot of services are located. And the residential developments have also come into this neighborhood with a lot of them in affordable housing. Next, because part of the beauties of this neighborhood is that it's well-served by public transit. There are several roadways and lines that serve it, such as the Cross Bronx Expressway, the Bronx River Parkway, the East, the East Fordham Road and Webster Avenue. The public transportations that serve the area include the BX fifteen, the BX forty and BX forty-two that connect to several parts of the neighborhood. And also the Tremont Avenue BD subway station, which is located almost half a mile northwest of the project area. And also the Tremont Metro North Station, which is located approximately zero point two miles west of our project area. The project area today that we're seeing today is locating in the intersection of Third Avenue and East Tremont Avenue, directly diagonal to the Walter Bloodwind Park. Next. This area is characterized by a good mix of land uses, and it includes all scales of residential uses, mostly located northeast of East Tremont Avenue with a important commercial corridor and uses along the avenue in both sides and scatter industrial uses, mostly located along Bathgate Avenue and south of East Tremont Avenue. The area zoning districts are also reflective of this diversity, which includes C four five X, R six A, R seven one, and one four R seven A and one four R seven X. And is also included as part of an inclusionary housing designated area. Next. So the proposed project area includes lots forty-three, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty, parcel of sixty-seven, seventy-two, seventy-seven, eighty, and eighty-four of block thirty, forty-three. All here surrounded by the black boundary, which is bounded by the east one hundred and seventy-eighth street to the north, Bathgate Avenue to the west, East Tremont Avenue to the south, and Third Avenue to the east. The projects that are included in the project area, but they are not part of the development site are the lots forty-three, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty, sixty-seven, and eighty-four, which are the ones that are outside the red boundary. Because the red boundary is the development site. Next. It consists of four blocks that together form an irregular-shaped parcel that it has some through and cornered portions. It has a total load area of approximately twenty-four thousand eight hundred square feet. And it has one hundred and thirty-three feet of frontage on East Tremont Avenue, approximately twenty-four feet of frontage on Bathgate Avenue, and approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage on Third Avenue. And the current uses on the lots that comprise the development site include some vacant lots, some enclosed parking, commercial parking lot, a three-story commercial and community facility building with some enclosed parking spaces, and a one-story commercial building. Next. The applicant is proposing to develop the development site with a new fourteen-story mixed residential, commercial, community facility building with approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred square feet of floor area, which will include approximately a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of residential floor area, twelve thousand square feet of commercial spaces, approximately ten thousand square feet of community facility space, and fourteen aggregate parking spaces. The way that all these uses will fit in the building, there will be accessory residential uses on this, on the cellar along with some social services. Then we'll, there will be retail spaces and access to the community and the residential uses to the rest of the building. Community spaces will be located on the second floor and the rest will be residential units. It's important to mention that the community, the community facility uses within the building are going to be used by the community healthcare network, which is the current tenant within the building located in lot seventy-seven, who wishes to establish and not only to stay in the neighborhood, but also to establish a modern health center to enable them to expand their services and include offerings they cannot do right now within that, that's a three-story building. Along this program, the, the applicant is looking to create approximately a hundred and five affordable dwelling units plus a one for the super unit. And since a part of the applicant team is the community healthcare network, they will be providing supportive housing to formerly homeless residents within thirty percent of the dwelling, approximately thirty percent of the dwelling units. And the supportive housing services will be located within the building, as I mentioned before, between the cellar and the second floor. Next, so in order to facilitate this development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone from an existing C four five X zoning district to a four, a C four five D zoning district, sorry, C four four D district. Next. And to get a good visual of what this district means, it allows a wide range of uses. Similar districts are mapped in the hub in South Bronx and along our Fordham Road. It is a contextual district that requires the buildings lined up to the street and reach a height of one hundred and forty-five feet or its equivalent fourteen stories. Where residential buildings are developed in the C four four D, it results in large apartment buildings similar to those that our residents in the Bronx see in Grand Conquerors and along the white streets in Melrose Commons. Next. In ceterminus to the project area on the northern side of East Tremont Avenue between Bathgate and Third Avenue, the applicant is proposing to modify appendix of the zoning resolution to establish a new M I H area option one over the block thirty, forty-three. Next. Pursuant to Local Law Seventy-Eight of twenty twenty-first, the applicant is required to complete a racial equity report. And here are the information provided. In the Belmont, Contrao Park, East and East Tremont neighborhood, sixty percent of the residents identify as Hispanic or Latino and thirty-three percent identify as Black, non-Hispanic. This is similar to the Bronx as a whole, but higher in the city overall. The population change in the neighborhood shows an increase in population over time of to ten percent between ten and, sorry, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. The number of residents identifying as Black, non-Hispanic, and Hispanic or Latino of any race has also increased over time in the neighborhood. The percentage change in residents identifying as Asian or Hispanic from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. The percentage change in residents identifying as Asian or Hispanic from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty appears to be larger, twenty-five percent. But this is a group that has a small share of population overall. Small changes in overall numbers of residents identifying as Asian or Hispanic show up as a large percentage change. Next. Because uh, and this report is made because the proposed uh land use actions will change the use regulations permitted and the floor area for any of the uses uh where a building uh project contains at least a hundred thousand square feet of floor area, as the case of the one uh proposed here. Uh, also in the report, the applicant stated that the proposed project will add new income restricted housing units in the Bronx uh and in the community district six, that um continuing the trend of housing production that have seen in recent years, uh, also getting advantage of um the transit access and the many amenities and services that are now located in the area. Next, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy now to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. As always, that was excellent. Uh, let me just ask, um, if we just go back to slide twelve for a second. Uh, actually, you know what? You don't even need to. It's right there on the screen. It's right there on the front screen. Let's look at that image for a second. Um, and I know that this is provided to uh to us, but I, I do note that the building, that's, that is a proposed to be a fourteen-story building with two hundred and five units, right? Right across the street. Um, you know, something feels out of whack with that image. Um, and uh, you know, I, I want to see if, if the proposers can give us a more, I don't know, accurate rendering of what that would be like. It seems like it's the same size as the four-story building right across the street over here, so.
Yep. Thank you for mentioning that, Chair. Uh, we, we also think there's something weird about the perspective uh with the rendering. Uh, we hope that uh when the, the applicant comes back to public hearing, we can have uh better visuals to illustrate the project.
Great. That will help. Thank you. Commissioner Rampershead.
Uh, yeah. So thank you, Chair. I was actually going to mention that also if it was possible to provide some plans, elevations, additional renderings, it would be helpful. I didn't see any in the briefing package that we have. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, thank you. Alexander, it, are all two hundred and five units income restricted uh affordable housing or?
Yes, uh, I have the, the breakdown, so.
Is that in our package? I should have looked at it if it was.
Um, it's, it, I believe is in a paragraph within the description of the proposed development, but I can go, go quickly through it. Uh, sixty-one units will be dedicated for supportive housing, fifty units uh at uh thirty percent AMI, twenty-nine units at forty percent AMI, twenty-three units at fifty percent AMI, twenty-eight units at seventy percent AMI, and thirteen units at eighty percent AMI.
Okay, perfect. That's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Oh, Commissioner Bozorg.
Hey, thank you for the um presentation. Um, I just had a question that it's probably better as a follow-up, but I, I don't know if it was in everyone's briefing package, but there was a lot of blank pages, I think, where the um, in my briefing package, it might be the way it's downloading where in around the race, the community profile um and some of the racial equity stuff. So I don't know if, if that could just be looked into. Um, sure, it's just mine or, but it's um from like page thirty-one on, it gets kind of wonky where the information, um, and I think that's where some of the racial equity analysis is, is not coming through.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then I know I, I, I think this is related to the last question I was asking on process. I know these are being certified today, but I think my question was, are these coming back to us as a group before a hearing or is the next time that we are going to see this and discuss it at the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, no, uh, so today the department certifies the application uh goes to the community board. Their clock starts in around in ten days, sixty days for a community board, then thirty days for the board president. After the board president, uh, thirty days concludes, that's when it comes back to the uh city planning commission. And um it comes in two ways. We will hold a pre-hearing where staff will brief the commission on the, on the project and how you learned went and any other observation we would like to share and prepare you for the hearing that will happen two days afterward. It's the applicant team that will share all their project with more details and you will get a chance to ask them everything.
Okay.
And also the colleague will come.
Got it. I think I was just getting tripped up on whether there will be a pre-hearing separate from this information.
Yeah, like in three months, we will see each other again about this.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Krimani.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the great presentation. Actually, you just answered my question. I had the same uh question as Commissioner Bozorg on process and just also wanted to second Commissioner Bozorg's comment that some of my pages too were also missing in many of the, of the presentation, even at full download. So just wanted to.
I'm sorry about that. We will check on that. Thank you for telling.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Thank you for flagging, Commissioner. We will address. Uh, Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, sorry. I just had one more thing. There are some existing uh both residential and commercial tenants on the site. Do we know what their future will be when this project goes ahead? Will they be relocated and how will that be?
Thank you for that question. Uh, it allows me to speak about more about the Community Health Network. So the co-op, the part of the applicant team is the Community Health Network that will be operating the supportive housing units along with the services within the building. To my knowledge, there are the ones that are currently tenants of the three-story building. Um, so this project, uh, not only will they maintain it in space, but also be able for them to expand. Um, I have no information about the commercial tenants of that building. Um, we will ask the applicant to provide that uh information for public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. I just, thank you, Alexandra, for the presentation and just a quick follow-up to build on that last question from Commissioner Bernie. If you can also uh ask the applicant to clarify what the um jobs, anticipated new jobs that will be commercial will be about, uh, because it's, it sounds like, you know, the majority of the anticipated jobs would either be construction jobs or associated with a health center. But, but the um race equity report does list, I think, over twelve thousand uh, um, sorry, over thirty-eight uh uh new jobs uh associated with commercial, but it's not clear where there will be, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, thank you again, Ali. Uh, five twenty-one East Tremont Avenue is certified. We will, in fact, see it back here for a pre-hearing uh in the future before its actual hearing. Uh, and we'll have plenty more time to discuss this one. We'll look forward to that. Let's move on to the next Bronx certification, Ryan.
Certainly. So the fourth item on our agenda is a certification of an acquisition in the Bronx Community District Twelve. And our presenter is Manny Legarres. Manny?
Okay, uh, Pratt Avenue retaining wall and roadway reconstruction. Next slide, please. The applicants, the New York City Department of Transportation, Department of Design and Construction, and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services are proposing the acquisition of portions of two privately owned lots in the Baychester neighborhood of Bronx Community District number twelve. The proposed acquisition, acquisition was supported capital budget tree reconstruction project for Pratt Avenue from Needham Avenue on the south to the dead end of the street on the north. In twenty fourteen, FDNY identified the damaged condition of Pratt Avenue and the retaining wall. They were concerned about the compromised safety and emergency response access to the residences along Pratt Avenue on account of the damaged condition. Temporary remedial measures were implemented in twenty seventeen to minimize future slippage and cracking, and the repairs were facilitated by a temporary easement, R M J Motel Corporation, uh, block four nine two two, lot one zero one, that's the location of the easement, to have access to the area and to perform the emergency work to support the retaining wall. This easement remains in effect in effect until twenty twenty-four. Land improvements to the project area include a new retaining wall, the reconstruction and widening of this portion of Pratt Avenue adjacent to the retaining wall, sidewalk reconstruction, and the installation of a combined sewer. Next slide, please. The project area is outlined in yellow and the proposed portions of lots twelve and fifteen to be acquired are shown in red. The thirty-six acre Seaton Falls Park is located immediately north of the project area. Thirty acres of this park are wetlands and woodlands and six acres are for active recreational use. The area is within an R four zoning district and is predominantly residential with two family detached and semi-detached homes. Next slide, please. The project area is shown on this tax map. The white portion labeled Pratt Avenue is the area of the street that is held by the retaining wall and is to be reconstructed. The tax lots within the project area boundary are as much as uh twenty feet below the grade of the built street. Within the project area, lot seventeen, which fronts on Marola Place, is a mapped but unimproved section of Pratt Avenue that is under the CAS jurisdiction. Portions of lots twelve and fifteen, which also front onto Marola Place, are privately owned and the proposed area of acquisition is the area of lots twelve and fifteen. The acquisition will facilitate the construction, maintenance and inspection of the full length of the new retaining wall. Next slide, please. This photo from Marola Place shows the unimproved area of Pratt Avenue with the temporary structure supporting the retaining wall and the built portion of Pratt Avenue. To the right of the photo is part of lot fifteen. Lots twelve and fifteen are below the grade of the built portion of Pratt Avenue. The photo key map on the right shows the approximate location of the area of lots twelve and fifteen shaded in yellow with the repaired portion of those slots shown as the area of proposed acquisition. Uh, next slide, please. This is a photo of Pratt Avenue looking north towards the dead end and showing the deteriorating retaining wall and roadway. You can see the drop off in grade on the outside of the retaining wall. Slide, uh, next slide, please. This is a photo of Pratt Avenue looking south towards Needham Avenue. As you can see, the road is in poor condition. Next slide, please. This slide shows some of the damage to the retaining wall with the temporary support holding it together. Next slide, please. The illustrative site plan shows the full extent of the proposed project with the area that is shaded green indicating the area needed for the retaining walls' construction access and long-term maintenance and inspection area. As it curves over to the left, it includes the rear portions of lots twelve and fifteen that are needed to ensure full access to the reconstructed retaining wall. In addition to the reconstruction of the retaining wall, there is enough room in the map right of way to slightly widen the roadway and provide for sidewalk reconstruction as well as a new combined uh sewer infrastructure. That is my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thanks very much, Manny. Just uh tell us the precise legal dynamic here. What, what exactly are we being asked to approve? Who's proposing it? Who's doing the work? Um, can you just lay that out for us?
Uh, yes, uh, the applicant is requesting the acquisition of the portion of those two lots, lots twelve and fifteen, uh, in order to provide access for the maintenance, inspection, any repairs uh to, well, after the uh retaining wall is replaced, right? These two lots will provide that access uh for any future work, and this is permanent access.
And I'll, I'll add that acquisition is, is a broad term. It can mean anything from, from the acquisition of real property that the city gives a property owner money and, and holds in, in fee to, to uh long-term rental or um, or an easement that just allows access um on, on, you know, on occasion. So uh, uh, the acquisition authority is very broad that, that's being considered here. My understanding for Manny is that this is for an easement to, to um just access the property, but that, that can be, um, you know, I, I would say that can, that's not material necessarily to the, to the action here uh proposed. And, and Manny, who's, who's the uh, um, it's, it's D D C.
D D C, uh, DOT and D CAS.
And D CAS, who are all uh co-applicants on this. And D D C does the work, DOT, it's the roadway, so they need the access to maintain.
Okay, so it's all three, three agencies. They come, they seek the authority to acquire some property interest, whether it's real property or easement or rental or whatever. And then they have the ability to go ahead and do it. So for our purposes, uh, it gives the right to allow them to replace and maintain the retaining wall and to enable the reconstruction of that part of Pratt Avenue. Full stop. Right? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see if there are questions here. Um. Uh, let's see here. Mr. Vice Chairman, do you, do you have a question on this one?
Uh, well, I, I did, uh, but I think it may well have been uh answered uh because my initial question was, from whom is the city acquiring um um this interest? Um. But it sounds to me like the acquisition is the easement uh or the access to the property that the city actually owns, I would assume, uh, to repair it.
Uh, no, no.
No, go ahead, Manny.
Those are the uh portions of the backyards of the uh two lots, lots twelve and fifteen, which are below grade. And we're talking about.
Well, who owns that property?
Uh, the names of the owners.
The R M J Motel?
Uh, no, I can get that information uh for you for the next meeting. Yes.
Yeah.
A private, a private interest. So private interest, so the city needs to secure access and we're gonna, we're enabling that, it sounds like. So uh, we, we, we should come back with uh for the vice chairman's question as to who, from whom the city would be acquiring the, the property interest in whatever form. But the short answer is it is from a private property interest. Okay.
Thank you.
I guess if the city owned it, I guess we probably could, we don't, we don't need our own uh grant of authority. We could probably just do it.
That's true.
No, thank you, Chair, because my uh collateral question would be whether or not uh the entity that owns it bears any responsibility for its, its, its present condition. Uh, I mean, it ought to be, it has to be remedied, obviously. That street is in bad, bad shape. I'm, but I'm just thinking about accountability here.
My understanding, and Manny, you can jump in here, is that the um, the easement will be accessed simply on the private property's uh interest, um, simply so that they can build and maintain. But the actual infrastructure itself, the wall, is on city property, so they were not the ones to, to be. And also I'm getting pinged, uh, that, that's just to clarify that D CAS is an applicant because they're the only entity that has the ability to acquire property, and so they're always co-applicants on these.
Okay, great. Other questions? Excellent. All right, Manny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. This item, Pratt Avenue Retaining Wall and Roadway Reconstruction is now certified. Uh, and we've got a few council modifications, Ryan.
So the fifth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination to two, two thirty-one oh six Northern Boulevard. Uh, Scott Solomon is here to tell us what happened. Scott?
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Uh, you can move on to the next slide. So, uh, the zoning application that was previously certified by the city plan, excuse me, approved by the City Planning Commission, July thirteenth, uh, was for an area that was approximately a hundred and thirty thousand square feet and it was already zone R one two. The application proposed to map C two two on an area between Parkland to the west to two hundred and thirty fourth street to the east, as you can see in the map change, uh, the, the zoning change map above. Uh, next slide. Uh, subsequently, uh, C Council has now recommended modification, uh, to reduce the size of the area to be amended. Uh, it would now only extend to two hundred and thirty third street as illustrated on the map change above. Uh, two hundred and thirty third street is a map, but unbuilt street. Uh, the portion that is now been removed, uh, currently occupies two auto-oriented uses, uh, that are legally not conforming uses, operate pursuant to BSA variances. Um, the area to the west still contains the development site, which is a restaurant that is seeking this rezoning to, uh, facilitate an enlargement. Um, so it's approximately twenty six thousand square feet, uh, that has been removed. Um, but the underlying zoning district proposed is unchanged. Uh, following review by city pla-, uh, Department of City Planning, we view the application, uh, modification to be in scope for purposes environmental review, uh, and we are here to communicate that to the commission as it comes back to the city council. Uh, that concludes it. Uh, now you can answer any questions if you have.
Excellent. Thank you. So, okay. Uh, so Scott, the, the, the councils, they peeled off all the sites other than the, other than the restaurant, but this will enable the restaurant to proceed with its plans as, uh, as it had sought initially. Is that correct?
Uh, they, they've only peeled out the, these two eastern sites. Um, and you can, uh, Jeff, you can move to, uh, a ladder slides. I think it's like four that provides an aerial and maybe even easier to describe, um, if you can move to slide, uh, four, I believe. That one, yeah. So the far right where it's flipped around, so now we're looking, we're looking to the south. So the restaurant is in the development site, then to the left here is the car wash, this vacant ha- house worship. Those sites are still in the rezoning area. To the far west, west of two, excuse me, east of two thirty third street, uh, those two auto use buildings, those are out of the rezoning area now.
I see. Okay. It, it's not, not relevant for scope purposes, but what, what was the, so do we know the, 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 the reason for the, the two staying in and the two going out?
Uh, my understanding was the, the prior concerns expressed by the council related to perceived traffic coming from the restaurant, not these auto uses. Um, so, uh, the only issues that we brought up were possibly, uh, that they just want to, uh, shrink the uses here to allow for the BSA to continue providing relief. Um, it, it's not favorable by the agency, um, but that was the preference from the council.
Okay, all right. Not, not our, not our first rodeo here. Um, okay, let me see if there are other questions, comments. Okay. Um, all right, just a reminder, this is a, uh, council modification and a scope determination and uh, it is the agency's, uh, uh, belief that these modifications are in fact within scope. Uh, so I'm going to, in a moment, take a vote, uh, where we will approve that, uh, determination. So I'd like to speak a cent by voice vote here to send a letter to the city council that these modifications are within scope on two thirty one oh six Northern Boulevard's commercial overlay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair, chair. No, Chair, just once again, could that letter indicate that we're not totally in agreement, even though it might well be within scope? It's not what we would recommend.
Sorry, can let me just finish the vote, Mr. Bernie, and then I will, then we can, we can discuss a little further, but I, I just, you know, it was just midstream. Yeah, were there any nays? I didn't, I didn't hear any. Okay, all right, good. So it's, so it's within scope now. Um, the answer is, uh, y- yes, yes, we can, we, we can note that we, we do not agree. Um, uh, and certainly this, uh, this hearing, this, uh, review session and this, these public statements also should serve um, that purpose as well. So yes. Um, thank you for that. Yep. Okay, let's go on to, um, the next item, Hallets North.
Certainly. So this is the sixth item on our agenda. It's a city council, uh, modification scope determination. Uh, and I believe Jonathan and Alexis are here from the Queen's office to.
Yep.
Tell us what happened.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, on September thirteenth, DCP received from city council modifications to the Hallets North Special Permit and Waterfront Authorization and Zoning Text Amendment that were approved by the commission on July twenty fifth. Next slide. Uh, the city council's modification of the zoning text amendment simply adds the deep affordability option or M I H option three to the M I H area. Next slide. And lastly, the council's modification shifts the FDNY turnaround a few feet north. While this is, uh, this has a de minimis effect on the waterfront open space and plan, it does relieve a pinch point shown here, uh, circled in red, uh, or, um, in red or whatever color, um, uh, shows up on your screen where the pedestrian walkway around the turnaround came into conflict with an entrance and egress. Uh, so the shift north, um, obviates that, that conflict. Uh, DCP staff has reviewed the modification and determined that this is within scope of the application previously approved by the commission and commission.
Great. Thank you. Questions on this? Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna do the same and, uh, take a vote. Uh, like a sent by a voice vote here to send a letter to the council that these modifications are within scope on Hallets North. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay. Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to, uh, future votes. Uh, so for consideration on September twenty first, twenty twenty two, there is a proposed resolution for the use of video conferencing. Uh, this is a resolution, this resolution will enable the City Planning Commission to hold its in-person on hybrid public hearings, uh, where commissioners may uh, participate remotely under certain circumstances. Uh, as long as there are, is a quorum of commissioners, eh, present in person. So this will allow us to have our, our in-person hybrid hearings, uh, starting in October. Um, there was a, uh, hearing held on this in May and, uh, we are now, uh, going to be voting on this on Wednesday. If there's any further questions, I believe our council, uh, yes, I see a question.
Okay, let's go for it. Commissioner, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Ryan O., we spoke about, uh, potentially, well, the idea of keeping the, uh, review sessions, uh, remote and continue and obviously in person when we had public testimony to make it easy for the public to come in or testify remote. Uh, I, were you able to get some kind of legal clarification if, uh, that is feasible?
There, there was. I did have a discussion with our, uh, general counsel. I don't know if Susan wants to address that directly.
Um, yes, I'm, I'm happy to address that directly. Thank you. Um, when the commission returns to in-person hearings, um, the, you, you can't really go back and forth between in-person and, um, and remote hearings. And so, so when, when the commission goes back to in-person hearings in October, um, it needs to really be regularly in person with, um, the ability of, you know, individual commissioners sort of on an infrequent or a regular basis to join remotely if something comes up that prevents them from coming in. But we can't go back and forth between in-person and.
Is, is it a matter of law or just simply a protocol?
No, it's a matter of law. So the open meetings law was amended, um, to, um, you know, set up sort of a, a dual structure, remote under, um, under emergency conditions, under states of emergency, but once, once under the open meetings law, um, in-person meetings start, then there's a protocol that the, that the open meetings law, you know, sets up and, and, and those have to be, the commission needs to be largely in person.
Thank, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Vice Chair Knuckles. Mr. Vice Chairman, do you have a question?
Yeah, Chair, yes, Chair, I, I heard the. Yes, I did. I, I heard most of what Susan said, but I heard virtually none of what the questions were. So I was just wondering if you could summarize, because the audio was in and out, for me at least.
Yes, the summary was, the question was, could we do review sessions?
I'm sorry, did you hear me?
Yeah, I could hear you. Well, I'm, I'm responding. I'm not sure you can hear me back. Um, but if you can hear, um, what the question was.
Yes.
Whether we could do review sessions remotely while doing, uh, the public hearings in person. And the general counsel, Susan Amron, uh, was saying that no, we could not, uh, we could not do it that way. I, I think the vice chairman may be having some technical.
Thank you.
Oh, you got it? Okay, all right. Um, great. Commissioner Bozor.
Thanks. Um, I just had a quick question because I saw it in the resolution. So, um, folks that want to testify can still do that remotely. Is that right? Okay, great.
That's correct. And most importantly, I'm looking forward to seeing all of you live and in person. I can't wait. I'm very excited. I'm very excited. Um, so, uh, we will, we'll look forward to, we'll look forward to, to getting together and uh, for me, this will be my first, uh, in-person experience. For many of you, it will also be your first in-person experience with the City Planning Commission. Uh, so we're very, very excited to, uh, to get back. Okay, Ryan, what's next?
Sir, so staff have, uh, prepared reports for consideration on the following on Innovation Queen's rezoning and large-scale general development. And Joy Razor is here with some final updates on this project. Joy.
Great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, next slide, please. This application is returning for a second post-hearing follow-up after the public hearing on August tenth. At the latest review session on September sixth, the commission had a few outstanding questions that we wanted to address. The first is related to a question, um, about how the modified project bulk would affect shadows that are cast in the surrounding area. The next few slides will demonstrate how the shadows have changed with the modified proposal through all seasons. The image on the left is the project as certified and the image on the right is the modified project shown during the equinoxes in spring and fall. In this image, you can see that the shadows have changed as a result of shifted bulk, causing fewer shadows to be cast on Playground thirty five and the proposed block C P A A space, which comprises the largest open space resource in the project area. Next slide. Uh, the next slide shows further differences in shadow during early spring and summer, where the modified massing also reduces shadows that are cast on the playground along with the P A A space. Next slide. This slide shows an image of shadows that are cast on the afternoon of June twenty first, during a time when the playground and the P A A space would be at its highest peak of usage. There's a slight decrease in shadows here along the thirty fifth Avenue corridor on the northeast side of the project area in that modified, uh, application alternative image. Next slide. And this final shadow slide shows the winter shadow conditions on December twenty first, when the shadows are the longest and the open spaces would be at their lowest usage. And you can see there's not too much change here, but, uh, we anticipate that the spaces will not be used too much during the winter. Next slide. Previous images of the cinema space, uh, had also not provided dimensions showing floor-to-floor heights. And the section diagram on the right shows the cinema space without the residential tower and its dimensions, uh, which will have thirty foot floor-to-floor heights and a base height of sixty feet along Thirty Fifth Avenue adjacent to the existing three and four-story residences across the street. The cinema would then set back sixty feet before rising to its maximum height of eighty feet. Additionally, the commission had raised questions about relocation plans for tenants within the project area. And according to the applicant team, they've been working, actively working with six residential tenant households currently living within the project area. One household has requested preference to be relocated within the new development. Two households consist of longtime historians and these tenants will remain in the neighborhood and four others are working to find accommodations elsewhere. The commission also had a question about community partners who will tenant the Innovation Hub on Block C. The Innovation Hub will be anchored by the LGBT Network, the Queens Public Library, Urban Upbound, Jacob Reis Settlement and the Queens Model Railroad Club. The new building will provide space for each of the partners to expand their existing services as well as the ability to provide new ones, which range from health and wellness services to tech literacy programs to English classes for new historians. Next slide. Since the last review session, the applicant has also provided an updated parking plan seen here in accordance with the reduction in the total number of parking spaces across the project area. The modified parking plan shows nine hundred and forty-nine spaces which are distributed across blocks E through, A through E of the project area. And the blocks highlighted in red show the largest reduction by redistribution. Blocks B and E will now have one hundred and fifty-four and one hundred and thirty-five spaces respectively. The largest amount of parking will still remain on Block D, where the relocated cinema space and residential towers above are currently proposed. Next slide. I also want to mention that the Innovation Queen's applicant team has withdrawn two special permits, uh, from this application in accordance with the proposed modifications. As you might recall, the applicant had requested special permits on all five blocks of the project area to permit retail uses larger than ten thousand square feet. They're withdrawing special permits that would allow these uses on blocks, uh, A and C and are instead only requesting special permits for blocks B, D and E that are outlined in blue. And this is, uh, due to the community's concerns about large retail competing with smaller businesses along Steinway Street. These special permits would still allow for the relocation of the cinema, PC Richard and the establishment of a grocery store. Next slide. The applicant is working on submitting revised materials related to the modifications that were described at the last post-hearing, including reductions in height near community assets, the expansion of the block A P A A space and the withdrawal of two retail special permits on blocks A and C. The FEIS was published last week on Friday and the CPC vote on this application will be held on Wednesday. We've also prepared a vote statement which Alexis Wheeler, our Queensborough director, will read. But that concludes my presentation for now and I'm happy to take any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Great. Thank you so much, Joy. All right, let's see what questions we have here. Commissioner Osorio.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Joy. That was very clear. I had a super quick question, um, building on your response on plans to relocate potentially displaced residential uh, tenants. I was wondering if there's been any, uh, response in terms of potentially displaced businesses, particularly the auto shops on blocks six seventy and six seventy one?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. Um, so the applicant has been working with some of these businesses, but the only tenant that has a contractual right to relocate back into the project is, um, Harley-Davidson dealership. And I know Alexis had mentioned this sort of at the last po- post-hearing, um, but all of these heavy auto uses would still be permitted with the MX zoning. Um, and there are a lot of factors that need to be considered, including impact on street life and pedestrian safety and curb cuts. Um, but they would still be permitted to continue usage with the rezoning.
Thank you, Joy. And just another quick follow-up question. If I understood you correctly, block E is one of the blocks where the applicant is not withdrawing the special, um, the, okay, good.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So that means that the, the plan there is slightly different anyhow.
Um, it, it would probably remain the same. They aren't withdrawing the, uh, retail special permit on that locate, uh, that location. Uh, only blocks A and C. Um, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold.
Hey, Joey, thank you. Um, Alexis, I think.
Alexis, I think last conversation, there was some mention of some change in the nonprofit partners. And to just wonder if you, it sounds like there's a good list of what's a nonprofit partner, so be in there. Can you just refresh our memory on what the, what the change was?
Certainly. I mean, I believe Joy has kind of the most recent list that was provided by the applicant team. Joy, if you'd like to share that, please?
Absolutely, sure. So within the Innovation Hub, they're still going to continue to tenant to the LGBT Network, Queens Public Library, Urban Upbound, Jacob Re-Settlement, and the Queens Model Railroad Club. The only change would be Pioneer Works who had space within, but they've had a change in management and just have decided to focus on activities specifically located in Brooklyn.
Yeah, got it. Got it. So it looks like, it sounds like a nice list, though.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I think that looks like it.
Yeah, since this is a vote on Wednesday, we're also, Alexis, I think you wanted to give the department's position on this.
Yes. Thank you, Ryan, and Chair Grotnick, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So it is with great anticipation that we vote on Wednesday on the Innovation Queens Large-Scale General Development and Rezoning. Innovation Queens is the result of years of planning to achieve transformative change in an area that's suitable for neighborhood growth. While this is a large-scale development that has significant change to the area, this new context plan would bring thousands of jobs across a range of sectors, along with more than 2,800 new apartments and nearly two acres of open space. The development would preserve the mixed-use character of neighborhood with the addition of new commercial and community facility spaces. The applicant has, the applicant team has partnered with longstanding community organizations, including Kaufman Historic, of course, as one of the applicants. They've operated in the neighborhood for 20 years. But as previously stated by Joy, some of the other partners that they'll be bringing on are the Floating Hospital, Queens Public Library, the LGBT Center, Re-Settlement House, and more who have contributed to place-based community service work. Large-scale development of this type is important for shaping the city and fulfilling citywide needs, but will always benefit from more community input and engagement. So we do acknowledge and thank the Community Board for their time and feedback on this project. We thank the Borough President Donovan Richards for his thorough recommendations on this plan and for ongoing work with the applicant team as a steadfast champion for the residents of Queens. And we look forward to Councilmember Julie Wong and our city elected officials taking the reins. I'd also like to thank the Greater Astoria community, especially those members that showed up to each and every meeting, public hearing, and workshop to have their voices heard, as well as the many DCP staff members who worked diligently on this project over the years. The city needs to employ a broad range of tools and approaches to construct more housing, especially permanently affordable housing. And private parties such as the Innovation Queens team are assisting the city in meeting our housing goals through such large-scale private applications. These types of transformative developments can make meaningful impacts on our unprecedented housing crisis. And based on the planning and analysis conducted over the course of many years, also shows this area is prime for this type of development. So Innovation Queens will bring new and permanently affordable housing and open space, both of which are lacking in the area today, to a neighborhood and a city that's faced in an unprecedented housing crisis. The department recommends that the commission vote yes on this proposal. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Alexis. And thank you for the thoughtful commentary and also for your, your efforts on this project, as well as your team, Joy, and the Queens Office more generally. We will, we'll look forward to picking this up on Wednesday for our vote. But I really did want to say to you, thank you for everything that you put into making this possible. And we certainly take that recommendation extremely seriously and certainly happen to agree with it. So thank you. Let us move on, Ryan, to the next item.
Sure. So we have also for vote consideration on Wednesday, we have 7946 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning and 4025 Crescent Street rezoning. I'm calling them together because Luis Garcia Martinez is the project manager for both, and I'll let him speak to them together. Luis?
Thank you, Ryan, and good afternoon, Commissioners. DCP has prepared a report in favor of the proposed 7846 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning. The department believes that the proposed R5D zoning district, which is designed to encourage residential growth along major corridors such as Metropolitan Avenue, is appropriate at this intersection and is consistent with existing buildings located within the surrounding area. The proposed C23 commercial overlay brings the existing non-conforming, will, will bring the existing non-conforming commercial establishments located within the proposed project area into conformance, and is appropriate as a similar commercial overlay is mapped on the block directly east of the project area. And this is the only block along this section of Metropolitan Avenue without a commercial overlay. The department recommends that the commission votes in favor of the proposed actions for the 7846 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning. Similarly, DCP has prepared a report in favor of the proposed 4025 Crescent Street rezoning. The development aligns with the 2008 Dutch Kills rezoning goals, which map medium-density contextual mixed-use districts over low-density manufacturing districts with the objective of providing incentives for affordable housing in areas proposed for higher-density mixed-use development, as well as to reinforce a mixed-use residential and light industrial and commercial context. Despite the proposed increase in density, the Prague areas, new district, would continue to serve as a transition regarding density and height between the higher-density blocks to the south and the adjacent lower-density districts to the north. The proposed map amendment would allow the site to be improved with residential uses, provide new ground-floor retail to activate this section of Crescent Street, and would allow the applicant's business to retain a presence in Long Island City, preserving existing jobs on the site. The proposed zoning text amendment would enable an establishment to inclusionary housing provisions in the special Long Island City mixed-use district, and will ensure new developments within the project area contain affordable housing. The proposed development would contain around 12,000 square feet of light manufacturing use and would contain 233 dwelling units, including 60 permanently affordable units. So to summarize, this rezoning would align with the overall special district purpose of supporting the continuing growth of mixed residential, commercial, and industrial neighborhoods by permitting the expansion and development of residential, commercial, and light manufacturing uses, encouraging the development of affordable housing, and promoting and retaining jobs within Long Island City. The department recommends that the commission votes in favor of the proposed actions.
Great. Thank you very much, Luis. We appreciate it on both. Okay.
And then we have also 7918164th Street rezoning. Scott?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners, again. I'll wait for the slide to be pulled up. It's just a brief one-slide deck. The Department of City Planning has prepared a report that supports Dr. Mikhail Cantius's proposal for a zoning map amendment, rezoning a C13 commercial overlay to a C23 while retaining the underlying R4 and R5D residential zoning districts, which would facilitate the legalization of an existing medical laboratory. We believe the modest expansion of uses allowed it in the proposed C23 commercial overlay, which retains existing residential and commercial bulk regulations to be appropriate, as it will support existing retail and services, as well as additional commercial opportunities, while reinforcing the low-density character of the area. That concludes my recommendation. And I have to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. And then we have 489, 485, 477, and 473 Bertram Avenue and 31 Jacob Street, which are certifications pursuant to the special South Richmond District in Staten Island. Staff believes the findings have been met on each of them and are recommending approval. Moving on to post-hearing follow-up, 280 Bergen Street. My understanding is that the applicant is preparing a letter to address some of the issues raised at public hearing. If there are any further questions that the commission would like us to ask, follow it up on, let us know. Okay. Similarly, for 1571 McDonald Avenue, we don't have any post-hearing follow-up prepared on this, but if there are any further questions, we can seek to address them. All right. On Livonia 4, Juki Sai is here with some follow-up. Juki?
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Livonia 4 was certified on May 23, 2022, and the public hearing was on August 24, 2022. The vote is on October 12. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to facilitate four new buildings with approximately 500 affordable housing units in Brownsville, Brooklyn, Community District 16. There were a number of questions posed at the public hearing related to encroachments of adjacent private property onto the development site, as well as the proposed parking in one of the buildings. HPD has provided a follow-up letter on the questions that I will summarize. And I want to note, the Department of City Planning wants to acknowledge that resolving encroachment issues amicably with property owners is important. However, the department also notes that the commission is voting on the proposed land use actions listed on this slide, which include the city's right to dispose of city-owned property, and that these actions are not contingent on property line matters. Next slide, please. So please note that on this slide, the purple lines refer to the encroachment locations. Regarding these encroachments, HPD outlined their communications with adjacent property owners to date, which is as follows. In 2019, following the designation of the development team, a survey was conducted to identify any boundary issues, and letters were sent to all encroaching property owners that same year. HPD staff visited each home and left notes for any property owners they were unable to speak with, during the summer owners they were unable to speak with. During the summer of 2022, HPD again attempted to contact all the Nehemiah homeowners in writing. To date, HPD has resolved several encroachments. The status of the outstanding encroachments is as follows. For Site C1, there are two adjacent Nehemiah homes that have portions of their fences and sheds located on the development site. Following the public hearing, HPD and legal representation from two of the Nehemiah homeowners have been in discussions to resolve the outstanding encroachments. While the discussions with the Nehemiah homeowners are ongoing, HPD believes that if a fence or shed needs to be moved, it can be done without the Nehemiah homeowners rendering any hard costs. They also note that no part of either of these homes encroaches, and that there is no risk of any displacement. Remaining encroachments on Site C2 and C3 do not involve Nehemiah homeowners, and these encroachments are in the process of being resolved between those property owners and the development team. HPD stated their commitment to work as swiftly as possible to resolve the outstanding encroachments, and shared that lenders and insurers will not sign off on financing when there are outstanding boundary issues. Regarding the parking on Site C1, HPD reiterated that the 15 spaces provided are intended to serve the 13,000 square feet of commercial use, which includes a supermarket, and that these spaces were included as a direct response to neighboring Nehemiah homeowners who expressed concern about increased traffic and double parking on side streets. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see if there are questions, comments. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Julius. That presentation was very clear, and I'm glad that the issues have been addressed. I just wanted to really quickly make a statement about the last point, the point about the 15 non-required parking spaces. And because this is HPD, and because I think that this is sort of like a larger dilemma, debate, that we're going to have to deal with, I suggest that we clarify, you know, what is, what is sort of the city's policy that we're going to be pursuing in this regard? And in terms of parking, but also in this particular situation where, in my mind, we have two agendas that are intersecting each other. One is the policy on parking, and especially on unrequired parking. And then the policy on what is the type of sort of solution that we're going to be providing in this particular instance, where in my mind, we should also evaluate the pros and cons of the supermarket versus smaller, fresh, affordable food options at a walking distance to everybody to, again, disincentivize parking and car usage in transit areas. So I guess my question is whether we can, how can we sort of explore that conversation to anticipate future projects or proposals that will sort of bring us here again?
Thanks, Commissioner Osorio. I don't have an immediate answer for you on that, because it sounds like what you're calling for is a really much larger, more complex conversation. I think we have the Commissioners and Chair Grotnick on the line here, obviously, who, you know, I imagine will be at the center of those future conversations. So Chair, I'll let you speak to that if you want to, or Commissioner, I'm sorry, I've written that down as well, and we certainly at Brooklyn Office are thinking about that.
Yep. Thank you for raising it. It's certainly an issue that I think we're gonna, we're gonna want to address in further applications and to look at more closely. So I'm glad you, glad you raised this, raised it, Commissioner. We appreciate that. Okay, let us, let us see if there are other questions, comments. Okay. Thank you, Juki. All right, let's move on, Ryan.
Sure. And then finally, on our agenda is the innovation or innovative urban village. And Karenza Wood is here with a update. Karenza?
I was talking. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. On August 24, the City Planning Commission held a public hearing on the Innovative Urban Village project. This presentation has been prepared as a response to questions raised at the review session on September 6 regarding the open space changes, Flatlands Avenue, and the project's proximity to the Fairfield Flatlands IBZ. Next slide, please. Regarding the updates to the open space plan, the applicant is introducing a new set of benches adjacent to the arcade located off of Flatlands Avenue. The intent of the inclusion of these amenities is to further activate the private street network, forming a stronger visible connection between the surrounding public streets and the new development. The rendering shows the area where these benches would be introduced. Regarding the treatment of street condition along Flatlands Avenue, the applicant has stated that they are committed to providing the maximum number of trees in the public right-of-way, and that they will follow DOT and park standards on the spacing of the trees and the tree pit size. Next slide, please. Regarding the impact of the project on the adjacent IBZ, the applicant believes that there is a natural synergy between the proposal and the surrounding IBZ. The proposed development presents a tremendous procurement opportunity for the businesses in the IBZ, and one of the major tenants of the project is creating prosperity for the local community. The applicant team is committed to working closely with the IBZ to ensure information on construction schedule and procurement opportunities are readily available to businesses. The applicant has also stated that the establishment of the Workforce Training Center on-site will provide other connections to the IBZ. Individuals there could learn skills needed not only for the opportunities at the site, but also about opportunities for employment in the IBZ as well. And that concludes my response to those questions. Happy to take any others. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Karenza. Let's see if there are questions here. Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And we are, let's see, the next step on this is a... What is our next stop on the training here?
We will have a vote on this on October 11. Is that correct, Karenza? Yeah.
That's right.
So...
Okay, got it. So not this Wednesday, but our next, oh, our first in-person?
Yes.
We will start with a, we'll start with a biggie. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Karenza. Thanks, Ryan. Okay, Ryan. My notes suggest that that may be the end for today, but you can tell me if you agree.
That is, that is the end of the agenda today, so you can...
All right, terrific. So with that, let me just... All right, terrific. So with that, let me just uh uh thank uh you, Ryan, and to uh the team at the department for all their very good and hard work, uh, as always, uh, in preparing us for what is to come on Wednesday and what is to come. Uh, you know, throughout the course of this process. So um, so thank you for that, and we will uh commissioners, we will see you on Wednesday morning to pick up um uh where we're leaving off here. And uh with much appreciation to you all, too. We are adjourned. So thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.